Welcome everyone to the November 19th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. In honor of the most recent Veterans Day, we would like to invite our local veteran and local resident, Mr. Nick Bordenor, to please come up and lead the township in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bordenor. All right. It looks like we do have Mr. Italia zooming in tonight, so I'd like to announce that Mr. Italia will be zooming in. The Board of Supervisors held a budget workshop where we started at 5:40, where Mr. Ryan had discussed with the board, we had reviewed the Fire Protection Fund number three, the Rescue Squad number seven fund, the Library Capital Reserve Fund 25, the Sanitation Fund number nine, the Capital Reserve Fund 30, the Sewer Capital Reserve Fund 31, the Operating Reserve Fund 95, and the General Fund. After we completed the budget workshop, we had public discussion in regards to the Residential Solid Waste Recyclable Materials Contract, where we had representatives from Whitetail, Waste Management, and Mascaro come up and speak to us about their services, and then we finished up going over a couple of the agenda items for tonight. So at this time, I would like to open the floor up to public comment. If anybody would like to come up, please state your name, your address, put it in the log, please, and a three-minute time limit.
Yeah, my name's Glenn Stevens. I reside at 345 East Myrtle Avenue in Feastical, PA. It's at that location where I was victimized by Mike Italia, that's the guy up on the TV there. I very much wanted to ask Mike Italia questions about why he did this to me, but Mike Italia pled the fifth. I very much think that our solicitor, Francis Dillon, instructed Mike Italia, the subcontractor, to plead the fifth and not answer questions. Now, on many occasions, and I've recorded all of these, just so nobody would change it, or I didn't want anybody to get rid of the evidence, so I recorded all of these, and I watched them all the time. On many occasions, when someone comes up and asks our board a question that only Mike Italia would know, they would say, "Well, go ahead and ask Mike Italia." And Mike answers the question. But when I tried to ask Mike Italia questions the next week, I was told by the board that I was not allowed to ask Mike Italia questions. It's blatant discrimination, not because of my color or religion, because I had the audacity to seek answers to why I was victimized. It's bizarre to me. This man is a subcontractor, he doesn't pay taxes here, he doesn't live here, he's not even an employee, but a township person cannot ask questions of why he was so victimized. Now, Mr. Gates, this gentleman here, he doesn't miss a show, he comes here every time. A couple of months ago, he said that he was sick of me coming here, and I am more than sick than anybody of coming here, I don't want to come here ever again. All I wanted was answers. And he said, "Well, they told you, all you have to do is get a survey." Well, Mr. Gates, if your neighbor was getting a fence, do you think you should have to buy a survey? I don't know how wealthy you are, sir, but I don't have that kind of money to bank surveys for somebody else's fence. It's ridiculous. The concept is totally ridiculous. Now, at one point, about a year ago, Mr. Italia threatened me with to sue me for harassment. Pretty weak, I think, he never did, but I think I've been, had much, did much more things. If what I'm saying is not true, I've been slanderous, but it is true. I have defamed his character, but it is true. Why wouldn't he threaten to sue me for something like that? Mr. Dillon has accused me of slander. When I asked him why, he pled the fifth too. Mr. Dillon pleads the fifth all the time now. He's been a lawyer for 50 years, he's 75 years old at least, and he's afraid to talk to a retired electrician. Why is that? Because he's hiding that he has been representing Mike Italia instead of us.
Mr. Stevens, sir, your three minutes is up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for listening. Thank you all for listening.
Take it if you want.
I'll see you in two weeks. I thought it was mine, I have one in the car.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? Please come forward, state your name, your address, if you can put it in the logbook, and a three-minute time limit.
My name is Patricia Fitzgerald. I reside at 1519 North Center Avenue. I just have a question. How do you get on the program to get your road fixed? Because I've actually been asking for a couple of years. The asphalt actually is gone, and the underneath surface is showing. I actually tracked down some workers that were working down the street, and they told me if they had enough patch, they'd come and do ours, but that was like a year ago, and I haven't seen them on our roads. So I was just wondering, how do you get assessed to have your road checked?
Mr. Coppins, sir, could you handle this, please?
And then I do have a second question.
Sure.
1519.
We do a rating system throughout the township, all the roads. It's based on a scale from one to three.
Do you have to request to have a rating, or is the whole township rated?
We have the whole township listed on our software, on our computer, and we go out every year, and we look at the worst roads according to the rating, then we make a compile list, and then we give it to the roadmasters who go out, which are a couple of the supervisors, and then we come up with a list that, you know, needs to be for mill and overlay.
So I would call you if I want to put a request in for our...
Yeah, I've already worked down your address.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. So that is next to my second question. The second question is, I'm here with my next-door neighbor, Garth, who I think you met, but we have an easement area behind where the creek runs and overflows, and it's overgrown, and on the deeds, it's township property, but then when we're called and told to take care of it, the trees are growing on the power lines. We've already had that transformer blow a few times, and we have a lot of elderly and sick people on our street that can't afford to go without electricity. So how do we go about having that area looked at and cleaned up so that we can potentially not have those issues?
Right back in, Mr. Coppins again.
So we did have, Pico did come out and trim the trees. The only easement that we have found, in my department has found, is there's a sewer easement there. The sewer easement is for maintaining the sewer line that runs through the property. It doesn't give us legal access to do any other work there. I believe I contacted zoning, Mike Italia might be able to speak on it, kind of handed it over to them because it's considered private property.
Wait, that's what we were told, but that's not what's on my deed. So...
That's not on your deed, you just said?
No, that's not, not that back area where the creek is.
Mr. Italia, can you hear any of this, sir?
That's not on there. We can't hear you.
I think we're muted.
We can't hear you, Mike.
He's muted, isn't he?
He's not muted. It's muted on the...
You got the TV.
Hit the computer. Hold on.
There's no pen up here.
Don't worry about it. You gave us your address.
It'd be nice to have a pen to sign in.
Yeah, there's a pen up there, it's underneath the clip, I say it. The, up top. Nope. One on your right hand?
Oh, 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 I see.
Yeah, so she just needs to send a copy of the deed over, and John and I can look at it. He can look at what he has to access to the county. And we can see if there's a discrepancy in there, and it's not showing up on our side. You know, perhaps that we have access to, that's something we want to look at.
So I have to bring a copy of the deed?
Or you can, whichever, whichever deed you're...
I hand it to them because I have a lot of department that says that's not something we need.
Okay. You want to come up and say anything? That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Patricia, we appreciate that.
I live on Center Road.
If you could just state your name, sir, and your address.
The whole thing that she was talking about.
Sir, if you could state your name and your address.
You've got a right-of-way back there. You don't have an easement. You have a right-of-way.
All right, that's fine.
Now, you can dispute that if you want, but...
Hold on. Tell them your name and address first. Then introduce yourself, okay? And then talk.
I don't give a damn what they say.
Well, I'm telling you, okay?
Okay.
Your entertainment's gonna be...
That's right.
Patricia, I'm gonna give you the email where to send that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. We got this all down pat. Okay. Now bear with me because I'm hard of hearing. We have a problem down there, and it appears that the township doesn't want to take care of it. The trees have grown up into the wires. There's any amount of debris underneath, and it's next to the stream, the Precressing Creek. Now, the vines had, every summer, they have a delicious place to get fuel, and they're all up in the wires. If we get an ice storm, something is going to come down. If it comes down, you've got at least a five to seven days where 21 homes have no power. Now, I've been up here three times about this. You've heard it, and it looks like it's a crapshoot. You can either say, "To heck with it," and leave it as whatever you want to call it, but if those go down, you've got 21 homes with no power for at least five days because the electric company ain't gonna come back in and fix the secondaries until you clean it out. Now, as far as a right-of-way, it says here we have a sewer right-of-way, we don't have a sewer easement. This is a document from 1961, when this was put together, and I assumed that that was when they started to put the sewers in. I've been here 50, what, 57 years, 58 years, and this couldn't have changed. If it changed, it would have told me. Now, you're walking toward it, it's a copy, it says right-of-way. Here. It doesn't say easement.
Can I make a copy? Do you want it?
No.
This is our copy?
I have the original.
Okay, good.
So, at this point, gentlemen, it's crapshoot. You either get in there with two days with a clearing crew, you can work six hours a day because you have to turn the electric steel off, but you can start at nine in the morning, so on the roads, and at 3:30, you have to put the electric back on. Up to you guys. You want 21 houses of power? It's a crapshoot. Do we get through the winter without an ice storm? If we get an ice storm, it's coming down. Do what you want. Up to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? Mr. Gates, always good to see you.
Oops. Jim Gates, 504 Orchard Lane. I don't know what you can do about this, but I was horrified the other day. I'm coming down Central Avenue onto Street Road, and, you know, there's a McDonald's over there in the corner, and there's a lot of teenagers that hang out at the McDonald's, and they're riding their bikes, and a lot of them are doing wheelies. You know what a wheelie is, where they get up and they're pedaling it? This gang of four kids was on the, on the north side of Central Avenue, went through three lanes of traffic doing a wheelie, got all the way over about, he went pretty far, probably about 50 yards, and there wasn't traffic coming when he did it, but when he comes down off the wheelie, and, you know, it's a little unstable, there was a part that far away from him. And I'm just afraid, you know, it's going to be a tragedy. I don't know what you could do to stop, you know, some happening. Kids, you know, I don't care if kids do wheelies, they just don't need to do them on a busy street.
And actually, I'll one-up it for you, too. A lot of these kids, it's called swerving. They actually try to play, you know, try to dodge the cars. How crazy of a thing is that?
I'll help us. As I said, I don't know what you could do about it, but it scared the hell out of me, to be honest with you.
Chief, if any of your officers should see that, could you just maybe mention it to them? You know, I know it's kind of limited, but, you know, Mr. Gates is correct, God forbid if something happens, you know? Thank you, Mr. Gates, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else out tonight for public comment? All right. Seeing none, now we will move on to the consent agenda. Line 1A, approval of minutes, October 28th, 2025. B, approval of minutes, November 20, November 5th, 2025. C, approval of budget minutes, November 5th, 2025. D, approval of accounts payable, November 19th, 2025. And E, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, November 19th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Line item two, preliminary final land development, all centers LP to install a drive-up ATM at 751 Bustleton Pike. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. The applicant's here to discuss this project, but I'll give a little background. We did two reviews for the project at 751 Bustleton Pike. Project consists of an area of the parking lot within the Bucks Crossing Shopping Center. Project proposes to remove 10 existing parking spaces adjacent...
Sorry, could you say that again?
Sorry. Apologize. The project proposes to remove 10 existing parking spaces adjacent to Bustleton Pike and install a drive-up ATM area. Site improvements include the previously mentioned drive-up ATM machine, ATM canopy, four-foot by 10-foot concrete pad, various pavement paintings, electrical pad, and surrounding landscaping. The shopping center is approximately 3.7 acres, and it's with 3,895 square feet of We have issued our review letter. They are requesting four waivers from the land development aspect of the ordinances. They did go in front of the zoning hearing board to receive variance, and the planning commission recommended preliminary's final approval.
So have you seen the, introduce yourself first, please?
Good evening, everyone. Steve Wolf from Clark Hill, on behalf of Citizens Bank, N.A. The applicant. With me here is Mike Pereira of Stark Architects, the architect retained by Citizens, and there's a representative in the crowd from Citizens Bank as well.
You saw the view letter of Mr. Everett's?
I have, yes.
And those terms were acceptable to you, and you comply with the terms of the view letter?
We're requesting waivers...
Well, granted, those waivers are approved in the resolution.
Understood.
So assuming the board approves those waivers, his review letter's acceptable to you?
Yes, that's correct.
Does the board have any questions regarding the application?
Ladies and gentlemen, any questions?
I just want to make a comment. I've driven through that area and looked at it. It's out of the way of parking, it's not going to interfere with traffic. I think it'll be an asset to the younger people that don't carry cash, and I think it's going to be easy in and easy out, and I think it'll be an asset.
The one thing I would like to expand is that there's trucks parked there currently now, every time I drive by anyway, these are the storage trucks or, you know, rigs that are there, so this could potentially remove those things.
Help us a little bit, too, with that. Got you.
Where exactly is 751 Bustleton?
So Mr. Chrysanthus asked for the viewing public at home, where is 751? It's right by the Firestone, Frank.
Okay, is it, and then next to it?
It's a...
And from the Dollar Store?
Well, it's closer, closer to Bustleton, I believe, and I believe it's, if you're familiar with where the Boy Scouts used to set up to sell trees, I believe it's basically right there.
So you can't really see that from the road, then?
And you're, you're above it, yeah.
And they are proposing landscaping to buffer it as well.
Okay.
All right.
And the removal of the 10 parking spots is not impacting the allowable numbers to any extent?
No, I'm honestly surprised that the way that the parking is striped out there now, there's, there's light standards that are in parking spaces. I have never seen that parking lot to capacity.
Mrs. Bowman, you have a question? You look like there's something on the tip of your tongue.
You know, you know what I'm thinking.
Is your microphone on?
Hold on a second. So this is where the Boy Scouts sell their trees? Do you have it out?
Mr. Everett, it used to be busy when Kitty City was there, but you're probably too young for Kitty City.
Will there still be room for the Boy Scouts to host their tree sale?
Yeah, on those two parts of the land, they can still sell trees and set up if that's where they're previously selling trees coming before.
Mr. Bordenor, would you like to come up?
What are the four waivers? What are the four waivers?
Mr. Dillon, what are the four waivers? Yeah. So the first waiver requires, the ordinance requires a bypass, escape lane for all drive-throughs.
Gentlemen, we can't hear. Gentlemen. Thank you.
So the first, the first waiver request is, the ordinance requires a bypass lane, escape lane for all drive-throughs. That area is open, so there's really nothing that's constraining the traffic to not be able to bypass. The second one is 132-foot-long stacking lane for drive-through services. Stacking lane is the area that is behind the cars that are at the ATM. Again, it's an open spot, that's in a parking lot, that's out of the way. Fourth one is a traffic impact study to be reformed. There's no new access onto the Bustleton Pike, it's all internal to the driveway. And the last one is, the ordinance requires a five-foot minimum curb radius. They are providing a one-and-a-half-foot curb radius, but I don't see that as an issue.
All right, all right. Any other questions from the board? Public. All right. Seeing none, then, I think we're ready to put a motion on the floor. The motion would read to adopt Resolution 2025-40, approving the application of all centers LP for the preliminary final land development to install a drive-up ATM machine. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Castle, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Perrotta, any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, folks, we appreciate you coming out. All right. Line item three, consider authorizing the solicitor to enter an appearance and participate in the litigation on behalf of the Board of Supervisors for 41 Terry Drive. Mr. Dillon, sir?
Yes, it's a pending zoning hearing application on this address. There's been some issues with the applicant on other properties down there which are currently being handled in the Court of Common Pleas, and we have some court orders. For that reason, we'd like to participate in this litigation, be authorized to participate to make sure the township interests are protected.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon, for that. So the motion would read to authorize the solicitor to enter an appearance and participate in the litigation on behalf of the Board of Supervisors for 41 Terry Drive. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, moving on to line item four, consider awarding the residential solid waste and recyclable materials collection contract. Mr. Dillon, sir?
Yes, I just want to give a brief summary so the public is aware of what's happening. The Southwest Buck Solid Waste Committee, currently consisting of Lower Southampton Township and Upper Southampton Township, prepared specifications and went out to bid for residential solid waste and recyclable materials collection. There was a mandatory pre-bid conference held on October 9th, 2025, attended by representatives from both municipalities, Waste Management JP Mascaro and Whitetail. As a result of that meeting and subsequent questions, three addendums were issued clarifying the bid specifications. Bids were submitted for curbside and automated pickup for both municipalities jointly and individually, and for 20 slash 30 cubic yard roll-off containers. Bid documents were shared pursuant to right-to-know requests. Upper Southampton Township awarded Option 1B, curbside only, for Upper Southampton Township on Wednesday, November 12th, and roll-off option for five years with two, and the options chosen were for five years with two one-year options. Lower Southampton, we had a presentation earlier this evening, and Lower Southampton Township, the board needs to make decisions. They need to decide, first, on the method of collection, second, the term of the award, third, the lowest responsible bidder, and fourth, the roll-off option. Joe can explain the roll-off option. Since Upper Southampton Township selected Option 1B, which is for Upper Southampton Township only, Lower Southampton Township should consider options 1C for curbside collection for Lower Southampton Township only, and Option 2C for fully automated collection for Lower Southampton Township only, and the roll-off option. Curbside, for the bids received, Whitetail was the lowest bidder for the three-year option, Mascaro was the low bidder for the three-year plus two, plus two option years, and the low bidder for five years plus two option years. Waste Management was the low bidder for the automated option. So...
That's what you gotta do.
Do we have to put a motion on the floor just to pick the type of service?
Well, I think you can discuss what you want, and then we'll make a motion to adopt one... First, I'd like to hear Mr. Galdo's explanation of the roll-off option.
The, yeah, you're real funny. The roll-off option really is really negligible, it's for 20s and 30s. We don't, the township typically does not use it, but again, you're going to have to make a decision. If it were to come, there was a point in time where we had some cement that were dumped in some of these roll-offs, and we had to pay Mascaro for those, you know, for those associated costs. In this particular consideration, this option is just part of the big contract, so whether you do curbside, automated, this is one component of that total contract.
But can I ask questions? I'm sorry, you don't have to. If you award the contract to whoever you choose, you have to take their roll-off option, it would seem to me.
Yeah, and that's what Upper South did as well.
Okay, so that's, if someone doesn't get the bid, they don't want the roll-off option, so...
Sure, and that's what I'm saying, it's part of the big contract.
Yeah, so it's...
Well, I guess I'll get the conversation started. I, I think our residents here would like to stick with what we have as far as the curbside, not the automated. So if, you know, if we can put that to rest...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we maintain a hands-on curbside collection, that we approve a five-year trash service with a two-year option. I propose that we accept JP Mascaro's bid, and we accept the roll-off option price from JP Mascaro.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor made by Mr. Castle, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a question.
All right, we have...
Did you mean the five-year with the option year one and year two, or did you mean the three-year with the option year one, year two?
Five-year option with a two-year additional option.
So seven-year contract?
Correct.
Potentially. It's potentially a seven-year contract, you're committed to five, you have the option for six and seven.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion from the board? All right, we already have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
No comments.
I apologize, I had my head down. Mr. Castle, you said somebody had comments? Mr. Gates, sir?
Yes, what is the roll-off option?
Come up to the mic, mister.
Yeah.
Joe, just tell...
I'm going to let Mascaro talk on that. I'm not the resident... I'm not the resident expert.
Yeah, let JP answer about the roll-off.
The roll-off containers are the long bins that are put out if they're needed by the township for events or cleanup or things like that.
All right. Anybody else? Questions, comments from the crowd? All right. Seeing none, once again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much to everybody who came out. We appreciate your time. Thank you, folks. All right. Moving on to line item number five. All right. Line item number five, consider authorizing the first and final payment to Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC for the 2025 roadway maintenance program. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. We're requesting the first and final payment to Asphalt Maintenance Services for the 2025 roadway maintenance program in amount of $159,760.48.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Everett. So, the motion would read to authorize the first and final payment in the amount of $159,760.48 to Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC for the 2025 roadway maintenance program, and to authorize the township manager to sign the documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to line item number six. Consider adoption of Resolution 2025-41 ensuring the undisturbed use for the property at 1983 Bridgetown Pike as a township library for 50 years or for the useful life of the project for which the Keystone Grant is sought, whichever is shorter. Mr. Dillon, sir?
I have no comment. I mean, Joe sent it to me. I don't know anything about the grant. You and I spoke about 50 years, seemed awful long, and I don't know what the life of the project is. It's $91,000. I suspect if you closed the library, they could chase you for the $91,000.
Exactly. Say you did know. About that. Don't cut yourself short.
Now, not that we would close the library, but making a 50-year deal is concerning from a liability aspect. I would assume that if something would interrupt that term, that liability would be prorated. You know, if you closed it in year 49, they wouldn't be looking for all $91,000. That's a question you have, Mr. Dillon.
I don't think you could assume anything with government, so...
That is true. That is true.
I think to forget about it.
All righty. All righty then. Okay, so we will put the motion on the floor. Motion would read to adopt Resolution 2025-41 ensuring the undisturbed use of the property at 1983 Bridgetown Pike as a township library for 50 years or for the useful life of the project for which the Keystone Grant is being sought, whatever is shorter. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second? Second. All right, we do have a second. Any further discussion?
Why aren't you guys like, "Let's go"?
Just so I'm clear with this, you know, with the language that we're seeing here, "for the useful life of the project for whichever is shorter", to me, it sounds like we're covering ourselves. I mean, am I imagining that?
You're covering as best you can, and you're risking being chased for $91,000 if you shut the library.
All right. Okay, well, I have no...
I would tend to believe the life expectancy for that particular room could be 10 to 15 years, so...
Right.
You know.
Okay. All right.
Bless you.
So, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Very good. Then we will move on to line item seven, consider approval of proposed TASER agreement. Chief, would you mind filling us in here?
Yeah, the ones we have are... They're not supporting them anymore. They don't make them anymore. So, we can't get parts. They can't be replaced. So, we moved to newer version. So, this would be, I guess, let me sign a five-year lease with them for...
You don't sign the contract.
We can sign. I don't care who signs it, but we need to equip it.
Authorize the... So, it would be authorized township manager, then?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief. All right. So, the motion would read to approve the TASER agreement for the police department with Axon Enterprise Inc. for the amount of $183,686.0 and authorize the township manager to sign the agreement. Do we have a motion?
Board Chair, could I...
Yes.
Ask a question? Chief, as far as, is that spread over a five-year period? Okay. So, your annual cost would be that $37,000, I believe it was.
And this is from approved service, or...
It's a specialized vendor.
We would hope so.
The only company that makes them.
Okay, so they're definitely approved.
I just want that on the record.
Chief, just before we get to that motion, so ours are too old. They're not serviceable. We're getting all-new TASER guns?
Yes.
And this is all the maintenance and all the supplies?
Yes.
I mean, that included. I mean, I'm sure you could expend the supply.
They're very easy to deal with.
Right, right. So, over there. And Mr. Castle brought up a point to me earlier about the liability that they offered to?
Yes. When you sign up with Axon and the program that the chief is recommending, it comes with a $10 million protection plan where they will defend the police department. They'll defend the chief. They'll defend the Board of Supervisors. Everyone in Lower Southampton is connected to this contract. And that's important in today's society where we sue for hurt feelings. So, if I could just add one more thing, Mr. Perrotta. We're going from the Model T to the Star Trek era. It's an amazing system that it's designed, and it's something that we really need, really need. So, I'd be honored to make the motion.
Absolutely. So, Mr... So, oh, boy. Where am I at now? Tell you what, you guys got me all over the place. All right. So, we... I read the motion. We... All in favor?
No.
Any... Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? I hope not. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Line item number eight, consider approval of removal and pruning of trees at township parks. Mr. Mo Hollins, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. Every year, I meet with vendors to review the parks or the trees in our park system. This year, I met with and received quotes from three different vendors, recommending all the above. I worked at Play Wiki in Siles Field, and then Shades of Green from the work at Township Building, Remp, and Copper Kettle.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mo Hollins. So, the motion would read to award the bid for the removal and pruning of trees at the Township Building Fields, Russell Elliott Memorial Park, Copper Kettle Fields, to Shades of Green for the amount of $8,925, and also to award the bid for removal and pruning of trees at the Play Wiki Farm in Siles Field to all of the above for the amount of $8,800. Do we have a motion? Motion.
We have a question.
All right. Mr. Cates?
You're probably asking my question.
I'll second Mr. Perrotta's motion, okay?
I more have a comment and I guess a question. I certainly support taking down dangerous trees, which you should do, and properly pruning the trees. What I would like to ask the board to consider, and you know how I'm talking about replacing trees in this township, as you've heard me say at least four times before, the tree cover in this township is 20% less than it was when I first moved here 25 years ago. And it also raises the ambient temperature in this township in the summertime. So, it's important you replace the trees, besides the ecological benefit of the trees and oxygen and so forth. So, I would like the board to consider, you can pass this resolution if you want, but for the future, I'd like you to consider the possibility of using some of the beautification fund which came from waiting, planting trees for developers, and use some of that money to start replacing the trees in the parks. You put them around the ball field, you put it in strategic locations. It's going to improve the environment for your all your sports events. So, anyhow, that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. So, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Line item number nine, consider approval of the addendum to Lieutenant Bowman's contract. Mr. Dillon, sir?
You discussed this last week about payments being made and being made this year as opposed to next. I asked my partner to prepare a contract, which he prepared and was forwarded to you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Dillon. So, the motion would read then to approve the addendum to Lieutenant Bowman's contract. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Comment? Any discussion?
Yes. These are just some of the small creative things that we're trying to do. This is really employee-driven, but basically, when people get ready to retire, they have time saved up, and they're entitled to have that time paid out to them. By splitting this particular employee's benefit, there are small dollar savings to the township, and whatever creative tax planning that the employee's doing, that's up to them. But this is actually beneficial by breaking it up and spreading it out over time. So, it's something, you know, I definitely approve of and something we should continue to seek more of.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to line item number 10, adopt preliminary 2026 annual operating budget. Mr. Ryan, sir?
Yes, I gave you two budgets, one with a zero millage increase and one with a two-millage increase. Nick, microphone? So, I gave you two budgets, one with a two-millage increase and one with a no-millage increase for the year. If we do go with the zero-millage increase, we'll probably be eating into our fund balance and maybe operating reserve. If we do go with the millage increase, we should be able to stay afloat for next year.
What millage increase is the administration recommending? If they're recommending a millage increase?
Two.
Two mils?
Yes.
And what is the approximate amount of revenue that would raise?
About $440,000. We used $208,000 of ARPA money this year to help with the budget for 2025.
The ARPA money is...
Gone.
Gone?
Yes. And if we're out the ARPA money, we would have been in the hole this year.
Current budget year, we would...
Yes.
Without the $200,000... The $8,000, we would have went negative.
Yes, we would have went red.
So, if the board was to accept that recommendation, what would the average homeowner be?
The average homeowner would be affected by $62.
And that means, that's a median price. That means 50% of the people may, would see higher than 62.
Less.
And 50% of the people would see lower than 62. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Wait a second. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I know these are all projections, and I know we're doing our best during the year to save as much budget allocation as possible. But we talked about it briefly in work session. Boring that you would do everything possible during the year and not knowing all the ups and downs of what, you know, we can get hit with. How much fund balance would you project that we might run into? Would it be at least that $200,000 that we're losing from ARPA? Or would...
It'd probably be about like, between like, 280 to 360.
360. It's what you'd think.
Yes, salary increases just from the EMS.
Patientary.
Yes.
And EMS is asking for more money. And our fire companies too.
Yes.
Okay.
As well as the library as well.
Thank you.
All right. So, board, we have, we can have some discussions. Somebody could throw a motion on the floor.
I'll have a... I have a question. How much did you raise the taxes last year?
We raised it 2.25 mils.
Board, any other questions?
I do have a question.
Absolutely.
If we make a motion to adopt the budgets this evening, preliminary, these are all preliminary, do we have room to make adjustments before we adopt a final budget?
So, the second-class township code provides, "The township shall not prepare an advertised notice of proposed budget when it's knowingly inaccurate. Upon any revision of the proposed budget, if the estimated revenues or expenses in the final budget are increased more than 10% in the aggregate or more than 25% in any major category over the proposed budget, it may not be legally adopted with those increases unless it's, again, advertised once again at least 10 days before the adoption and the opportunity given to the taxpayers to examine the amended proposed budget."
So, the answer is yes. We can change it.
Yes, but if you change it a lot, you gotta re-advertise.
Okay.
Right, and you can't adapt it if it's inaccurate.
Correct. And there's also a provision where it can be looked at again in January if necessary.
All right, folks. I'm gonna make a motion for a two-mill increase.
Do we have any other discussion? I know Mr. Perrotta has a motion on the floor, but I feel like...
So, Board Chair, if I could just make a statement on there. So, calling out the revenue projected, if there was a two-mil, I believe, the revenue amount would be $14,381,925. The expenditures, taking into consideration that one error that was listed, and the $37,000 being added back in for the tasers, the expenditure projection is $15,073,011. So, the potential reserve to be utilized would be $691,086. So, just to correct that aspect.
And that would, that would be, once again, to the reserve that would be used? Is that what you had said?
The, if max appropriations were utilized, that's where that number would come in. The reserve that would be used.
That's on our estimated budget.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We have, well, I shouldn't say we, you, for a matter of placing the blame.
It's not an estimated budget. It's a preliminary budget.
I'm sorry. But the projections that are in the preliminary budget. Year to year, we hope to gain efficiencies through the year to control those numbers. And keep us from dipping into the reserves. Yes. Okay. That's what I wanted to make clear. Only up to January. I meant January.
Yes, Mr. Chrysanthus?
It's getting harder every year.
What happened to it? Did it came?
I haven't had it in months. Frank Chrysanthus, 301 Heights Lane. Last year, as Bill said, we raised it 2.25. How did we end up budget-wise?
We projected to have a slight surplus, I believe, of maybe like $12,000 to $16,000.
So, I was like, almost spot-on. That's pretty good. Hey, that's all I wanted.
Thank you. All right. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve a two-millage increase for the 2026 year. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a second to that and make a comment, please. This is budget, we've been crunching numbers for months now and I'm embarrassed to say the amount of money that we give our volunteer fire service and the amount of money that our ambulance squad works under. If we had to pay these guys, we're talking about $5 million, which no one wants to absorb that cost. They've asked for a, the fire companies asked for a 13% increase in what we as residents give them and the service that they provide is, is almost priceless. We just saw here a week or two ago how these firefighters were saving a life of one of our residents. A two-mil increase, it's gonna affect all of us. I'm on fixed income, but I think we're getting by very well the way we're managing this, this budget and nobody is riding these departments harder than I am, asking them to cut back, cut back, cut back. And so, two mils, I think that's very minimal. If we end up with a half a million or million-dollar budget shortfall, then we're gonna be back here in September and October crying the blues and I don't want to do that.
And just so I can add to Mr. Castle's comments, the fire companies that are traditionally volunteer don't only have a value to us as a community, but it has a value to every property owner. If we didn't have a volunteer company and we could not afford a full-time company, your house insurance would go through the roof. The fact that having these volunteers avoid the township from taking on the responsibility of having to fund them is a tremendous benefit to us. So, you know, nobody wants their taxes increased, nobody wants to pay taxes. I don't want to pay taxes, you know, but if we were in a situation where we didn't afford people that want some increases from time to time, we would be a lot worse off. So I think what they're asking for, the fire companies asking for, is more than reasonable. There's inflation, there's contract liability. Unfortunately, people that work like to get paid, you know, and, you know, it's our responsibility to maintain a ready, well-trained workforce and we try to do that and I think, you know, it's a responsible thing to do, so that's all I have.
I have a comment. I thought the fire companies were looking for $58,000 additional.
It was $26,000 each.
It was $29,000 each, right? So it was $58,000. So let's be clear that we're not just raising taxes because the fire company wants more money.
I didn't mean to make that implication.
You both did.
I didn't mean to make that implication one bit.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that also, that the millage increase is not due to our volunteer fire company. When I was president of Feasterville Fire Company, we never asked for a millage increase and I actually prevented them from coming here and asking you for a millage increase. They had not had a millage increase since the 1990s and the increase in their budget is to make up for about 25 years of no millage increase and inflation, where I held that back. We did a really good job managing during COVID, but now it's coming to a point where it's critical. They have vital infrastructure improvements they need to make and it's time that we make up some of that millage that they never got for 25 years. The last millage increases that they got, they got one last year.
2018.
2018 and now they're asking for one...
2018 forward, there's more increases.
Forward, they're getting increases to make up for that 25 years, but before that, they hadn't gotten anything since the late 1990s. So, but they are only asking for $58,000 and that is not the millage increase that is being asked for on the budget. So I just want to clarify that also.
$58,000 additional into what they're getting.
All righty, folks. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Abstentions? Motion does carry, three to two. All right, line item 11. Adopt preliminary 2026 capital reserve fund budget. Mr. Ryan, sir.
Our capital reserve budget is where we buy majority of our items like cars, vehicles, help the EMS and the fire companies as well. For the capital reserve fund in 2025, we had a reserve fund balance of $366,953. The total projected revenue for the year would be $584,239. That would leave us, we had expenditures of $477,535, leaving us going into 2026 with a fund balance of $473,657. With that estimated fund balance of $473,657 to start 2026, I expect revenues to be about, next year, around $957,777 for the year and estimated expenditures of $1,737,194 for the year. This would leave us with an estimated fund balance of negative $305,760 for the year, which includes a transfer from the general fund for $300,000, which wouldn't happen, so, but just in case. So everyone go negative and if we got, as we should be getting RDA money, but that's not accounted for in the revenue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. So the motion would read to approve the preliminary 2026 capital reserve fund budget as stated by Mr. Ryan. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotano. We have a second. I'll second that. All right. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion carries, three to two. All right. Line item 12. Adopt preliminary 2026 sewer capital reserve fund budget. Mr. Ryan, sir.
All right, this is where we can use the, this is where we fixed our manholes this year and where we plan to fix the pump stations future into 2026. We'd be starting with a fund balance in 2026 of $1,169,473, estimated revenues of $215,000 for the year, an estimated expenditures of $675,000 for the year. This would leave us with an estimated fund balance of $709,473 for the year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ryan. So the motion would read to adopt the preliminary 2026 sewer capital reserve fund budget as stated by Mr. Ryan. Do we have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
Other question?
Yes.
That doesn't, that's the sewer fees, that has nothing to do with the tax increase, right?
No, this is...
These are individual budgets.
No, this is, this is...
The tax increase would not reflect that budget.
Well, in a way it kind of does because we put the $200,000 we normally take from the OA fund and we put it into the 31 fund. We do a transfer.
And that's whether you have an increase or not. We try to put around 100 to 200 each year into the sewer capital reserve for future projects.
Do we have any other discussion?
So that, hold on, because you just contradicted the tax, you just said...
I didn't say that.
You're gonna put that in there regardless...
No, I did not say that. I said that based off of operations, we like to put, whether you have a tax increase or not, we'd like to put in 100 to 200,000 into sewer capital reserve, irregardless of any tax or increase in fees.
So every, every year you try to build the reserve fund?
Absolutely.
Because there's needs for sewer repairs?
Absolutely.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Abstentions? All right, motion does carry for line item 12. Moving on to line item 13. Adopt preliminary 2026 library capital reserve fund budget. Mr. Ryan, sir.
In 2026, we'll start with a reserve fund balance of $87,249. I expect estimated revenues of $242,300 for the year and estimated expenditures of $252,000 for the year. This will leave us with an estimated fund balance of $77,549 for the year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ryan. So the motion would read to adopt the preliminary 2026 library capital reserve fund budget as stated by Mr. Ryan. Do we have a motion?
Sound moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion carries, three to two. All right, one more there, folks. Line item 14. Adopt preliminary 2026 operating reserve fund budget. Mr. Ryan, sir.
Yes, so in 2026, we'll start with an estimated reserve fund balance of $1,669,459. Estimated revenues of $20,000 for 2026 and estimated expenditures of $800,000 for the year if something really serious happens. This will leave us with an estimated fund balance of $889,459 for the year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ryan. So the motion would read to adopt the preliminary 2026 operating reserve fund budget as stated by Mr. Ryan. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, folks?
Just one clarification. We talked about work session. The $800,000 expenditure is a contingency to protect us against...
Yes, in case of emergency.
Some major...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, moving on to line item 15. Consider approval of addendum, yes. Consider, it was on your desk. Okay? It was also sent to us too in an email, so we could have seen it that way also, folks. Okay? Consider approval of addendum of the Play Wiki Farm apartment lease and have the township manager sign the addendum. Over at the Play Wiki Farm, one of our Public Works employees resides in the apartment upstairs. He's been there now for, I guess, close to a year, a little less than a year, in that range. He made the request that he would like to rescue a cat from the Women's Human Society. He has a cat lined up by the name of Bruce and he would like to see if the Board of Supervisors would allow him to have a feline friend. He is gonna be paying an extra $200 total for a little, little added to the security. I have no issues with it. I would like to make the motion to consider the approval of the addendum to the Play Wiki Farm apartment lease and have the township manager sign the addendum and have Bruce move on in. So I made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Now, sir.
I bet he, well, I imagine there's probably a lot of mice there too. All right, so we have a...
Not with a cat there now.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion from the board about Bruce? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the manager's report. Mr. Gallo, sir.
Board chair, just one item. Yard waste last day for this respective year is December 11th and I just wanted to let the residents know. Thank you.
All right, supervisors' comments. Mrs. Bowman?
Yes, so I just want to clarify because I voted no for a majority of the budget motions that happened this evening and I just wanted to clarify why. I received the budget at 12:30 this afternoon. I felt as though I needed more time to scrutinize the numbers, also found some mistakes on there, so I would encourage everybody to correct the budget, spend some time with the budget, go over it line by line by line before we come back to a final where we further burden the taxpayers with an increase for our budget. So I just wanted to clarify that. Also have some announcements for Parks and Rec. We are hosting a Write Letters to Santa event. Children can, of all ages, can drop off their letters to Santa starting November 24th and that'll operate till December 19th. They will receive a letter back. Please include a self-addressed stamped envelope. The mailbox locations are located on the front porch of the Township Building. Look for the sign at 1500 Desire and also there is another mailbox located at the Township Building, hold on, lobby, inside the lobby from 9:00 to 4:30. All right, and that is sponsored by Parks and Rec. There's also, we're doing another house decorating contest for the holidays that will begin on December 18th. Oh, registration now, is starting now? Oh, okay, it's now until December 18th. That's really quick. Voting will begin on December 12th and voting will end on December 27th. So make sure you register your house at contests@lstwp.org and voting will begin on the 12th. So good luck. I look forward to viewing everybody's houses. You'll have to let me know when you go out, Walt, so we can do the run together again. That was fun. So, all right, stay safe, everybody. Have a great Thanksgiving and we'll see you back in December.
All right, Mr. Perrotano, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank everybody in our audience who came out to participate tonight. It's always nice to see people come out. We're entering into the holiday season, so you're all gonna be rushing around trying to get all those things done. Just remember, there's always tomorrow, but if you rush around too much, you may forget that, you know, so this is, let's all of us remember to be safe and enjoy our families and, you know, accept all the good things that happen around the holidays and don't forget those people that are less fortunate than us, to help them out. You know, if you've got a neighbor, you know, reach out to them, you know, this time of year when it gets dark early, you know, people that are, you know, closed in, you know, they need somebody sometimes to reach out and just say hello and this holiday season's perfect time to do it. As far as the budget goes, budgets, you know, are always difficult, no matter where we're doing them at. I'd rather be supporting, would I support it tonight and have the ability to have a second look before we do the final than to try and do it the other way around. So as Ms. Bowman said, you know, we're gonna be looking at the budget. You know, if there are changes to be made, we have the opportunity to make them before we do a final and it saves a lot of aggravation rather than to try and re-advertise it and start it over and do it again. So if we end up at two mils, that's, you know, where we, where we end up, it's, you know, it's either use up more reserves or make more cuts and, you know, you can always make the argument for more cuts. I don't personally believe we should be doing that. I think we run at a very short staff to begin with, plus we have additional contract obligations that we have to worry about, so while I don't like it, I'm comfortable with, would I support it and, you know, I hope the residents accept it for what it is and just, everybody have a nice evening. Thank you.
And I'd just like to jump on to what Mr. Perrotano said too. You know, if we should changes, that would mean we have a second meeting in December, which I am 100% fine with, but I hope my colleagues here also would find the time to have that second meeting to come and not, you know, and not stay home for whatever reason. So, Mr. Ottinger, sir?
I didn't vote for tax increase because you had to tax increase last year. Who the hell wants another tax increase?
Nobody.
Right, so...
I know nobody likes a tax increase, but my son is a volunteer firefighter in this district, my wife is a fireplace officer in this district. I would rather them be safe with the safe equipment. I mean, a lot of that wears out. I mean, you should know as well as anybody, equipment wears out, it's gotta be replaced. I mean, I would have my tax money go towards...
Yeah, yeah, folks, it's not really public comment, this is supervisor comment. So, Mr. Ottinger, if you have anything else, sir? If not, we can move on.
That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Mr. Castle, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank everyone for attending our meeting tonight and those who are at home watching or are gonna watch later on. We're here to serve you. We make difficult decisions sometimes, but I've lived in this community, I served in this community and I continue to serve and I do the best I can for everyone that's sitting here, not just a few select people. So please sign up for emails from the township. You get one email a week, lowersouthampton township dot org. And I want to thank Mr. Boardner tonight, our community veteran here, for leading us in the Pledge to the Flag. Our Veterans Advisory Council had a service in the Sarah Mitchell Center next door on Veterans Day where we remembered our veterans who served this country and we can never forget the service and the sacrifice that they've provided us for our freedom. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, which will be next week. It's an opportunity to show our gratitude for all the blessings that we have, and we have many living in the country like today. On Sunday, September 23rd, a local church, a Christian Life Church, the Galloway and Ritualu, is gonna have a Thanksgiving meal giveaway. They're giving away 500 meals. You could get a turkey, or you could get a ham. Everything comes in a box, everything that you need for a meal. So if, if, uh, you're in need this year, all you have to do is drive over there. You could go online to the church's website, clconline.org. I don't know how many people will be in line, but they have 500 complete meals to give away. So if that would apply to you, certainly help yourself to that. Mr. Chairman, as I close, our next meeting will be?
December 10th.
December 10th. You took the words right out of my mouth.
About that, huh? Almost like I know what I'm talking about. I tell you what, that's actually beautiful, the, uh, your church to, to offer that. That's, that's incredible. 500 meals for people that, uh, might go that day without having one. It's just amazing. It's been said already, but I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We look forward to seeing you all December 10th, and at this time, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much, everyone.